Everyone, I'd like to welcome you to the one of these joining and saying for a meeting. In which case we provide some loose and tight.
President of the House of Representatives of the United States of America, and to every part of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as all.
Thank you. But well, the first word of business is to welcome back our good mayor Sis. Welcome back with major feeling better than we had had in back in Michigan very much. And secondly, June Gibboli, roll call please.
Andy Lee.
Here.
Dickinson.
Here.
Bushian.
Here.
Chaskey.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Walperly.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Galviness.
Here.
The Pallas.
Here.
Beatrice. Robert is absent. So Mr. Rowan?
Here.
John, Brian Hall.
Here.
And Pete. Mr. Pete Fletch.
Mr. Rowan, could you just state for the public certification who's going to be voting tonight in place of our absent member, please?
Um, can I appear to be any D variances or U variances on the agenda tonight? So I think everybody would vote on the votes are going to begin with both terms. We see which may or may not be.
And Mr. Beatrice, he's voting also this evening?
Uh, he will be filling Mr. Johnson's.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Full complement, full word for all of our applicants, okay?
All right. Public notice that this meeting pursuant to open public's meeting act has been given to the clerk in the following manner, posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Clerk's office, emailed to retrospect, and in courier post. First word of business is approval of minutes from the March 9 meeting, some motion?
I'm going to have your.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. All right. Under new business, we have an administrative amendment to the Gargers Real Estate Company application. Mr. Raganes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board, Sam Raganes in behalf of the Gargers Real Estate Company. You may remember approximately two years ago, Gargers had submitted an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval subdivision to erect an addition that they had extended from the rear of the funeral home going along Havoc for the Avenue. And they would have taken down the original Garger home set, and they would have realigned the property also to the left by taking down the outbuildings, the sheds, the small garages that are there. The progress of the plans and the order of the building, after careful consideration with advisors, financial advisors, the project cannot go forward as originally hoped. The size of the project is going to be dramatically scaled back. The project will really just clean up the outbuildings now. There will be one larger building, the same building that's approved, that will be constructed, just that singular outbuilding. So at this point, the Gargers would like to proceed with the financing that will be needed for that, and they need to realign the financing on the project from the perspective of bonds will be required, which are now going to be much reduced. I spoke to your solicitor, spoke to Mr. Hall's office, and the scale of the project being much reduced, but yet, the request to have bond, really, my client would like to have bond waived at this point because there's only going to be a broad fill. They felt that, you know, the Board would really be better at hearing it and having the entire small amount of construction occur as occurring, the understanding is occurring, rather than them from the United States saying, "Okay, we'll go only with that step." So we're here, just advise you that the project can't go forward, and only this small amount of construction will be built. So I have the engineer for my advocate, Mr. Jeffries, is here. He can compare the old plan with the new amended plan, which pretty much correlates to what I just said. So if you have any questions, we're here. That's something.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. All right, how are you?
Good, Mr. Jeffries.
See you.
See you as well. Well, thank you, sir. Let me first start out by just giving you a quick overview of the original plan. Make that up to the reference.
Hello. You're under our man.
Keep staring.
Speak loudly so they can pick me up. Um, this is a rendered version of the original site plan that we presented to the Board two years ago. This represents the existing funeral home and the proposed addition that was to be constructed on the backside of the funeral home with the elimination of the two garages that currently exist, and then the construction of one larger garage in back corner of the site. The existing home on Havoc was going to be demolished to allow for the expansion of the parking area of the pine funeral home, and then the reconfiguration of parking on the side of the funeral home. The existing house here on Plaza Place was involved, was to have a lot line adjustment and be made paying at residence. The, these improvements were approved from the Board. We are paying outside agency approvals for these, for these improvements. With the reduction of the scope over, and I'll turn the plan over here in just a second, what it involves is construction of this garage, demolition of the two existing garages, the construction of this garage. This addition and this parking expansion not being constructed, nor will the parking modifications here be constructed.
Mr. Jeffries, what is the size of that garage you are being constructing?
That garage is 50 by 72, and that is the same size that was approved initially.
Okay.
Now, I'm sorry, this is just a black and white version, but this plan represents the proposed improvements at this point. Again, it involves a 50 by 72 garage at the same location, then marrying up into the existing pavement that is there, and then with the re-stripping of the parking stalls just to redefine the parking areas, the drive aisles, in the area here between funeral home and Plaza Place. There is a proposed trash enclosure that was originally proposed as part of the site plan improvements, and that again may be constructed as well here. The two existing garages, again, are going to be demolished. In addition to these improvements, there will be landscape improvements around the garage that are consistent with the landscape that was proposed previously in the area of the garage. The existing house on Havoc will remain, the existing parking will be high of the funeral home will remain, but simply be re-stripped. Mike Burton, assuming that you're going to have more parking spots while you're coming out? Uh, the, it essentially balances out. We lose a few parking spaces behind the existing garage, which we gain here along the side of the new garage. We leave the difference as two parking spaces. Thank you, David Wood. We have not called.
And then by some of any questions for Mr. Raganes and Mr. Jeffries regarding the question of bond?
Uh, that would be up to council, Mr. Jeffries. We may make that determination.
So you have to take that in, in the Miami Council?
Yeah, that's, that's the request that, uh, I'm not sure, had they come here and said, "We're going to just kind of set up the two year ago episode and all that money, unfortunately, to spend," had they just gone in and they would have gotten a filling permit two years ago, there would have been no bonding. So essentially, we're asking fairness if the bond get to waive now.
Yeah, Sam, I don't think we can waive that. I mean, we can say we have no objection, but yeah, that would be up to the township, I mean, the borough to make that waiver on.
Right.
It would essentially probably be an extension on your approval period because I think it runs out in two years.
The Permit Extension Act is in place because of the Great Recession.
Right.
Everybody's extended until the end of 2014 at least.
Yeah. Sam, you, what, just sort of Board's clear, you're abandoning the rest of the project. You're not just asking to phase this in.
That's correct.
Okay, so the Board understands that. They're, they're essentially putting in the record, they're abandoning what this Board has given them before, but only are going to proceed with a smaller amount of the plan of this. If they wanted to redo it, they would have to come back in. They're not trying to extend it or, or to phase it.
Well, one thing I want to point out that I didn't mention to Mr. Dickson, the Board had requests that we consolidate all the lots because there were, going back in history, Gargers was little 50-foot lots. They, that has been consolidated, that's already been done, but that's, you know.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So I ask the question because I figured if it happened to consolidate, if we just make runs as a lot from box, and it will be just standing up. Yeah, but I think that has been consolidated, has been accorded.
Yeah, it has been accorded, that's done.
But folks, this does appear, Sam reached out to me before he reached out to engineer, it does appear to be an administrative amendment. He's not asking for any more than he's given before. Legally, the Board can entertain such requests. Maybe it does not have to be a public hearing, it does not have to be, people don't have to be notified, or it doesn't have to be publication.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the administrative amendment to Gargers Real Estate Company?
We would like to, we would like specifically to allow, have Chair define, I'm interrupting, apologize. If we could just have a recommendation that the borough, because as Mr. Rowan points out, it's actually the borough has to waive bond, and the Board would recommend that, that's what we ask.
Sure.
So the motion would be for recommend the administrative approval and recommend that the bond be revoked.
Yes, thank you.
All right, your motion on the floor?
I'll move your motion.
Mr. Dickinson, Mr. Rockley, roll call please.
Hey, Howard.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yes.
Bushian.
Yes.
Wolverton.
Yes.
Chaskey.
Yes.
Walperly.
Yes.
Galviness.
Yes.
The Pallas.
Yes.
Beatrice.
I'm very surprised behind me. I'm not very.
Okay, guys, thank you very much for loving the project.
Thank you.
We're going to sit through the vets. Oh, that's right, you're still here.
Excuse me. Sam, do you need this thing done immediately? Council has a special meeting on the 16th, and then we have our regular meeting on the first Tuesday in May, so I need to be dressed right away.
I don't know if I have this resolution to June, copy it by Monday afternoon.
Special meeting on the 16th.
All right, it won't be assigned resolution obviously by this one, but I can get that out, so at least.
Is that something you need done?
Yeah, I, my client's aware this is the only thing is, uh, I'll be structured.
Well, on the 16th meeting, you know, if this Board sends a letter recommending a waiver, I think that's, that's your problem.
Yes, yes, welcome back.
June, just bring a copy of the administrative resolution from the assigned right. All right, next, we have a, a site plan application for 610 North Black Horse Pike, which is Sports Depot. Now, I would like to take a moment to bring everyone up to speed on this application. Unfortunately, our engineer's office did not receive all the information two weeks prior to the hearing, which is required by this Board. Mr. Pettit's office received it, I believe, on Thursday, so Mr. Pettit's office was unable to complete his letter and his report. The applicant has asked us to hear him tonight, and I was very clear with him on, and his attorney, on email with our solicitor and with Mr. Pettit's office, that I would not hear this application unless I told the Board, and no one here had a problem listening to this application without the benefit of the engineer's letter. Having said that, if the Board chooses to listen to this application this evening, I also made it clear in no way we would be giving him final site plan approval this evening. The best we can do is preliminary site plan approval. I had a conference call this morning with Brian and John, and we went over the variances. The variances that they are asking for seem to be in order. They have withdrawn the variance that they were seeking at the informal last month for the setback on Sixth Avenue, they have withdrawn that variance. So all the other bulk variances appear to be in order, and I did have that conference call with Brian and John, and Brian will testify to that verbally, but unfortunately, we don't have the benefit of Mr. Pettit's letter. If we do grant preliminary site plan approval tonight, I also told them that it is going to be conditional upon any and all conditions that we choose to impose that final site plan. Mr. Diana, Chief Diana has not had the opportunity to look at the site, Mr. Verdi, the fire department has not had an opportunity to look at the site, so we obviously have to let all of the other entities look at this before we grant any type of final site plan approval. So is there anyone here that is not comfortable listening to this without the engineer's letter, Mike? Everyone okay with it?
No, certainly, sounds fine.
Well, it's your fault.
After the, what will be of the Board?
Well, again, if, if you're not comfortable hearing it, we will table until May, or we can hear it, and then at that point.
Well, I feel that, you, we would always be hearing the, the senior answers tonight, is that correct?
Yeah, I think all we're going to do is the bulk variances this evening, and the reason for that, if I'm not mistaken, Andy, is that we had, we have a rate lock in term.
Yes, correct. Uh, the, the lender involved in this case will require a minimum preliminary approval to allow us to go forward and close on the property, which we intend to do within the next couple of weeks, if not our letter, I think the letter expires and the rating process will increase.
So that's, I'm sorry, Mr. Rowan.
There's a difference, Andy, and I have to agree with you, preliminary site plan approval and approval of your bulk variances.
Correct.
So the Board member, you can hear the bulk variances, but if you've given, if you're going to hear and get preliminary site plan approval, you're doing it without the, that's it of the review.
I, I, let me, let me correct what I said. You need approval of the variances to, to move it forward. And that, that being said, Mr. Clancy, Mr. Pettit will work together to the purposes of working out the detail on the engineering plan, and when the Board hears the application, it will pretty much understand that it is not an extensive plan requiring a lot of engineering, and it's very similar to the plan that was submitted previously for the purposes of our informal. And in fact, the only recommendation at the time of the informal was that we move the building location off of the Sixth Avenue, and we did that in, you know, with coordination with Mr. Pettit's office.
And Andy, you might have no objection if this Board does act favorably on the, the bulk variances tonight, that it would be conditioned upon you seeing the final approval.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And Mr. Clancy told me he cannot be here this evening either, their engineer cannot be here this evening, so I don't know how much depth you want to go into as far as the site itself. We want to just, I mean, again, you guys decide what you want to do, but if you just want to hear the variances tonight and hear your verbal report on that, because I know Mr. Pettit was not prepared to give us a complete report on the rest of the site, Mr. Clancy cannot be here this evening, so basically, all we're trying to do is move this thing forward far enough just for him to, to lock in his rate. So Mr. Rowan.
You can hear the, the bulk variances, I guess the arguments are why they shouldn't be.
I think that's, it's reasonable for us to.
Okay, well, with that, if you want to swear in, applicant?
Yeah. Andy, anybody that's going to give testimony tonight?
So Brock, I'd say testify also and, and.
Okay, John, when you raise your hand, do you sound like you're a firm, the testimony you're about to give this Board tonight is true form after your vestry hours?
Yes.
Okay, and whoever testifies, we're going to just have to give their name and address for the, for the Board.
Let me very briefly explain the application. This is the existing Sports Authority Building on Black Horse Pike in Harmony. It's owned by an entity that, who is actually, Mr. Pettit, who is actually a tenant, Mr. Pettit's entity is also.
Mr. Pettit. which is the contract purchaser for lots 601, 602, 603, and 604. 604 is the playground, but the, this application does not impact the playground. The playground will remain as playground under its lease with the Borough. Present, presently, Mr. Pettit and his, his company have to store a large amount of their retail sales product in a different location. They are asking this Board to allow them to build a 5,595 square foot addition onto the property, and that would be two stores. The testimony will show, and the Board will hear, that as a result of the, of the addition, the following things will not change. Number one, there will be no additional employees, there will be the same employee base. Number two, there will be no additional retail customers coming to the, coming to the site because it's effectively the same merchandise that's being sold in the store now, but now stored at a different location. There will be no increase in delivery traffic, and actually, there will be a slight decrease in delivery traffic because now they have a van shuttling back and forth between the two locations for the material that will now be stored and kept on site. And the, we've noticed at least seven, eight variances, but of the eight variances that we have noticed, seven are existing conditions. There's really only one variance that we're asking this Board to consider, that's an additional variance, and that is the variance that's caused by adding the, the proposed storage facility, and it will be closer to the lot line with Lot 7.01, I believe that's a used car lot right now, than would be allowed under the ordinance. All of the other variances that are involved are all existing conditions and have been part of this, the history of this building from the time, I guess, as it's the American clients or, and Mr. Rowan is, is doing event, is the, is the owner now, he's consented to this application, and he's the contract seller precedent. Um, we have entered into, or we're in the process of entering into, and Mr. Raganes represents the VFW, and cross easement agreement with the VFW for the purposes of making formal their ability to park in, like our client's property parking lot, and our ability to cross a portion of their property for traffic that goes in and out of the facility, and including the trucks that may be required to make deliveries for the warehouse, pick up and deliver at the warehouse. The waiver that we have asked for is for providing drainage calculations, which we need to have to deal with tonight, just so that the Board has a full picture of what it is, and the, we've asked that the drainage calculation be waived because in fact, we picked up a little bit more in purpose.
Yeah, the, the buildings are flowing on top of asphalt right now, so we're not going to create any more or less.
We're actually increasing the, the harvest cover to by approximately 1% because of the, the grassy area.
Landscape.
Right, and, and it'd be on the Sixth Avenue side. With that, I'm going to ask Mr. Pettit to just confirm a couple of things with you. Mr. Pettit, how many, how many employees do you have at the store, moving owners?
Nine.
Okay. After the, if this Board grants your application for the, to build the additional warehouse facility, will there be any increase?
No.
Okay. What is the use of the store now? What do you, what's done there, to sell the, the storage material?
Yes.
And what is the purpose of the warehouse?
We have a more warehouse and demo mod, like not convenient, and everyone, Sixth Avenue, I would have to start and draw off, it would be a linear.
Okay. As a result of adding this additional spacer, will you be required to add any employees?
No.
And, and explain why?
It's the same business, not, uh, completely business very much, maybe not at all, because we already have big warehouses in Bellmont, that's where we're transporting all that stuff from Bellmont to Bellmont.
And when you complete the construction on this facility, before it grants this, this approval, you're going to eliminate the, the rental warehouse in Bellmont?
Yes.
And since this is the same merchandise that's now being sold on, on the shelves, do you, do you see any increase in the number of retail customers coming to the store?
No.
And you've, and you've had some discussions with and through the Council, you've entered into an agreement with the VFW for the purposes of, they're going to be able to, to have the ability to park in, in the spots that you're parking spots, and they've agreed to allow you to cross their property with, you know, for purposes of parking or for the truck access to the rooms?
Yes.
Are you going to change your hours of operation at all as a result of adding this warehouse event? And there isn't, there, there is an issue dealing with your loan commitment, the loan commitment is expiring, and if you don't close it, the lenders indicated they're going to increase your rates.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I'm okay with everything. Anybody else in the Board have a question on this?
Mayor, we property, we VFW, you're right.
Excuse me, sir?
You own the.
No, the VFW actually is the, is the owner of that building, but they don't have, they park in, in, in Mr. Rome's lot. As a matter of fact, Mr. Rome, consent of, of Mr. Pettit Paul, not too long ago, beaded over a piece of this parking lot to the VFW so that it would accommodate their expansion and put all of their improvements within their lot lines. I don't know if it's indicated on the plan, but there was a, I believe, a sign, perhaps, a, a storage building that was, that was there. The VFW is able to accomplish that as a result of a deed of, of a piece of property for Mr. Rome. Of course, Mr. Pettit Paul, having been the contract purchaser at that time, had to consent to it also. So Mr. Rome, and now has always had a good relationship with the Canada, the VFW, Mr. Pettit Paul, would like to continue that, and he's making every step in, in that direction that he can.
Anybody else in the Board, question for any applicants?
I just want to make clear, we're not addressing anything on this.
Oh, and Brian, are you prepared to give some?
Yeah, I think you'd be able to run down the variances. We did have a chance to look at the variances that they're requesting, and the most of our most of the latest, the applicant's attorney did state their existing conditions. They are proposing with the new addition, a setback from Sixth Avenue to 10.70 feet, which would require a variance when a minimum side yard setback in the season would be 10 feet and an aggregate of 30 feet, and they're proposing a total, no, total aggregate of about 12 feet between the side yard of Sixth Avenue and the side yard between the existing building and Lot 1.03. They're also asking for a. They're also asking for a, wait, or, I'm sorry, a variance of the purpose coverage. Currently, it's an 82% coverage, and they're reducing it to 81%, so making the condition a little better. The variance is requested because the ordinance requires 50%.
Pre-existing?
Pre-existing, they're making the condition a little better, that's wrong. The, the next variance is from the parking lot requirements to allow parking spaces 8 feet from waterways when 20 feet's required, that's an existing condition also. They are restriping the parking area and moving the entrance along Sixth Avenue of about 20, 30 feet, but again, that's the existing condition, so. They're also requesting a variance from the existing lighting requirements. Our office would not recommend granting that variance. This is a facility, they're doing improvements to the site, so they should, they should incorporate those site lighting improvements for site safety factor.
I think we spoke about that, again, formal, about making sure that you didn't create a refuge for kids to hang out at and be in between the buildings.
And, and this getting a parking lot for the VFW, they do have night time gatherings, this would be a nice safe place. I have not been able to visit the site, I've driven by it previously, but not, not for this.
Who will pull the application to that variance?
Thank you.
Number six, Andy?
Yes.
Thank you.
They're also requesting a variance from providing parking bumpers in all parking spaces. I'd have to ask a little bit verification testimony on that one. There are parking spaces in the center of the parking lot field that wouldn't require parking bumpers, but I, we would suggest that parking bumpers be provided in all perimeter parking spaces. It appears that they have them on a strolling all along that front of the VFW and all along the ones up front of Sixth Avenue, so I'm questioning the requirement for this, or the request for the variance.
Their landscape, their, their landscape too is in front of the VFW, I believe.
Right, that, 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 that's not the variance, is this, I believe, Sixth Avenue?
Well, it'd be Sixth Avenue and the ones up front of the VFW also.
We'll, we'll put the, the parking bumpers.
We'll withdraw that, Andy, when you do your plan, and Jim does the plan, we'll show you.
Withdrawment, fine, Andy, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
They're also requesting a variance from the existing condition of signage. The, the description that was very elaborate, so I'm assuming that signage is not changing?
The signage is not changing, if you look at your plan, you'll notice that there's a sign on Black Horse Pike, which is immediately in front of the door, it's the existing sign, it was approval, it was an approval, prior approval of this, of this board for that sign, not changing, it, it, it would have required variance because it's located within the parking lot itself.
And the existing facade signage, is there going to be facade signs called a new addition?
No.
Okay, so the existing signage for the facility is remaining the same existing condition, so we wouldn't have any issues with that. And their, the final request for relief is the waiver for drainage calculations. They're reducing the amount of impervious to the site, they're not triggering any requirements to, to provide storm alarm management.
So getting rid of the building now?
Well, the existing parking lot would be the same wrong. So they're, they're not obligated to provide any calculations, this is just a, a perjury waiver request.
Randy, would you like to add? At this point?
No, not at this point, I, I spent this afternoon looking over the variance requests, and haven't really had a chance to look at the, the site layout itself. The attorney did give me a copy of the cross access easement just tonight, so I will review that, and that has to do with the ability to allow the VFW to park in the parking lot and for the Sports Depot to drive across a portion of the property, so we'll, we'll take some time to review that in our, in our technical review portion.
Well, first off, I just want to thank you very much for changing your schedule, and for John changing his schedule. John and I were on the phone from 6:30 last night, and I guess you and I will be back on the conference with John, and I'm, I know, I know I stuffed this in your plate, and I really appreciate you stopping to do the billing, and I help us accommodate our applicants, so thank you very much, appreciate that.
And for the applicants, I, I thank the chairman and all the board members and the professionals for helping us in this matter, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And you have just one question, excuse me, number, number one variance, is that for the side yard facing Sixth Avenue, Andy?
No, I believe that the number one variance is for the, the side yard that goes up on, okay, Lot 103, if you look at the left side of, of the.
Sure, sure.
Sure.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll make sure that.
Sure. Pretty sure it's.
I'm, I turned around, so I'll look, Black Horse Pike is right there.
Okay, this one's.
Okay, that, all right, so that's one, adjacent to lot, what do we have here?
One, three. And Lot 7.
And Lot 7. Lot 7 is right there.
That's what you used car lot is.
And then.
Very good, okay, so I just.
So that's the existing building.
Number two, is that the one, oh, six?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And, um, that's. This one here, this is.
Okay, one more, here, is the last one, is this one here? So, and here.
I do have one more question, and just to clarify it to the board, is this addition is only for warehouse storage, it's not going to be additional retail area?
No, no office, no retail, strictly storage, okay, all the, all the offices, and Randy, you can, all the offices in, in the existing building is going to remain there, there will be no retail space in the, in the warehouse, and there'll be no office space in the warehouse, correct? So you're really just moving your Bellmark facility over here, nobody staffs that now, nobody will staff their character to it.
Anybody else have any questions for Ryan?
The other question I have is that there's a trailer on the lot, if the president's on it?
Yes.
Is that there for storage, or is that, will that be eliminated when you build the building?
Yes, it is.
Yes, what?
Yes.
Trail will be eliminated.
Okay, you said yes, you said yes, okay.
What's, what's the size of the truck that makes deliveries to the, your, for your annex building, if you're one?
Mostly we are delivering by straight box trucks or tractor trailer. But mostly our delivery come by UBS car, mostly, but some come with the box trucks, like few come with tractor trailers.
And you, you now get a box truck and tractor trailer deliveries now, right?
I'm assuming you guys will put the radius back there, we can get a tractor trailer back there safely?
Yes.
Okay. And again, that'll be something that Chief Diana has a problem with, tractor trailer going out on Sixth Avenue, or just that. Mr. Ryan, do you have any comments?
Uh, no.
No.
If you open to the public and.
Mr. Ragnoese, did you say you wanted to speak on this application over to the public?
Thank you, Matt Chair, we have your post, which is pretty knowledgeable, we're almost been through a neighbor for many years. Mr. Carson says provided your solicitor and also my office with finally a written type of document called an easement, cross easements, that will allow the apartment by effect veterans, that's the first sign, and, you know, that's all, he's been a good, good neighbor and he owns the land, and the application's going to go forward at this point.
Mr. Ryan, is that, is that document, anybody want to become part of the bar?
Yes, that, that's going to be part of the, the final approval that this is presented, it's been presented previously, I, Andy just gave it to me tonight, I haven't reviewed it, although I will.
We'll, we'll be furnished with copies of that before we're, we're asked to vote on.
I think, yeah, Andy will get the, or did you give copies to, you gave me your copy?
I believe I, I gave some of your copies to, to, correct. Is there sufficient copies of what I, I think I gave?
I can read it.
About eight, I think, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this application, this application only?
Here's some of the major, major, excuse me. For this end.
Uh, for years, the VFW probably sold the parking lot about 40 years.
Say, what?
The VFW probably sold the parking lot about 40 years ago, Mr. Rowan, or whoever, and we've been, you know, never had anything in writing before, and now we do, you know, so you don't have to worry about, like, it's in writing that we're allowed to use the parking lot forever, and if we ever sold the building, which will never happen in my lifetime, that the people that buy the building from us can use it too. So, our VFW is going to give away over 50,000 this year, veterans, seniors, schools, so this can move along fast to get all this out of the way so we can raise 60,000 next year, okay, thank you.
Thank you for the work you do for us, we understand. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this application? Can I take the motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Fulton, second by the decision. Okay, Mr. Rowan, I guess if you'd like to.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have the board, the applicants who presented all this, the variances, that he would like to have act on tonight, you've heard his testimony, I would suggest that any approvals, any motion that is made, the approvals be conditioned on final site plan approval of this project. The first variance appears to be a side yard setback variance between lots, joint lots 1.03 and Lot 7, where the 10-foot minimum is required and a 30-foot aggregate in order to allow the continued of the 1.1-foot side yard and 3.2-foot aggregate. This is a pre-existing condition, so I believe the, the tenant owners may defer approvals on, on that particular variance request. The, the next variance that we would be voting on is additional side yard variance regarding the variance between Lot 7.01 and Sixth Avenue, where again, 10 feet minimum is required, 30-foot aggregate is required in order to allow the applicants to maintain a 5.3-foot aggregate, aggregate 1 point feet side door on one side and 6.5 in total, the old side door on the, um, this is a brand new variance because of the, the addition that he's, he's brought, but I think based on the informal, he has reduced that from what he initially was intending to do and.
What did you say that was?
By the board. He's also seeking a variance where our ordinance to allow 82% impervious coverage, where 50% is allowed, but again, that's 81% is pre-existing, it's another 1% which is here to be managed. He's also requesting a variance from our ordinance regarding existing parking so that it can't be, you know, closer to 20 feet from a property line so he can maintain parking area from the side, hand side street. Once again, that's a pre-existing condition. He's withdrawing his request for five and six, he's asking for a variance to maintain the same sign in the same location, and he has requested a, a waiver for drainage calculations, and I believe Bryan says he thinks he's okay with that. So there are the variances that are being requested, that you're asked to act on tonight. Once again, any approval would be conditional on final site plan approved, the final site plan approved, for any reason wasn't granted, these use variances, I mean, these seat bearings, bulk bearings would not be, would not be.
Does anybody have any questions for?
I just wondered, you know, the fact that everything's contingent and.
Andy has indicated that that's, that he agrees with my recommendation, and once again, these, if you get an approval, I, it, the, it's conditioned that they get final site plan approval, if they don't, these variances are, they're not granted, they're, they're not permanent, only if he gets final site plan approval, so that's what you're voting on tonight.
Any other questions? We're entertaining a motion to grant the bulk variances as grabbed by Mr. Rowan for preliminary, preliminary only, site plan approved.
I was going to say.
For, for 610 North Black Horse Pike, and we have a motion on the floor, I think, you know, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hawley, if you have a vote, please.
And Heather?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And Amy's?
Yes. Yes.
I can have one question. It would be prudent to have a lot consolidation along these.
I think that's something that should be properly addressed at the, at the next hearing, and I don't think Andy would have any checks to consolidate all these lots.
No, I don't think there's any.
It's not for our time now, yes, yeah.
The, the only lot that perhaps should remain separate apart would be the lot where the playground.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
That, that would make it easier for any future, uh, feeling of that property.
All right, gentlemen, well, good luck, I hope everything goes forward, and thank you for coming in.
Your first day on the board, Chris.
You're welcome.
Well, so, thank you, to the board, it's the chair, the board, and the press, and probably thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sam, thank you.
Phil, I salute you, sir. Okay, the next order of business is, we, I guess we want to read the resolution recommending to Mayor and Council of the Borough of Runnymede to the Joint Planning Zoning Board of the Borough of Runnymede to eliminate, tent or prohibit the destruction of townhouses or other clusters of residents within the R3 zoning district within the Borough of Runnymede.
Okay, now, my, my resolution, Mr. Chair Lady, also includes any other residential districts. I think at the time, we.
Do I have a copy of it?
Yeah, um, I think it was the intent of board not to just limit that prohibition from R3 zone, even though it's not in our R1 and R2, but to make it clear that we don't want in any residential zone. It doesn't mean that the township, the Borough Committee can just say, well, we're just limited to R3, but I'm feeling that in any residential zone, if I'm.
Yes, I, I will read the revised one that I was, that I was sent. Whereas, by letter dated February 6, 2013, from the Borough of Runnymede Council to the Borough of Runnymede Planning Zoning Board, Borough Council requested that the zoning planning board give a recommendation regarding townhouse development within the Borough of Runnymede, and whereas the planning zoning board did place upon the March 2013 agenda after notice to the public of the time and place of such meeting, at which time the members of the planning zoning board did discuss the issue of townhouse style development within the residential districts of the Borough of Runnymede, and did open such discussions to the public for comment, and whereas the planning zoning board has determined that it is in the best interest of the residents of the Borough of Runnymede, and because of the character and development of the neighborhood which now exists within the Borough of Runnymede, and because of the existing street system and. and because of the existing street system and traffic patterns within the Borough of Runnymede, that any provisions for townhouse style development within the Borough of Runnymede should be eliminated and/or prohibited. Now, therefore, be resolved by the planning zoning board of the Borough of Runnymede as follows. It is the recommendation of the planning zoning board for the Borough of Runnymede to Mayor and Council of the Borough of Runnymede that amendment should be made to the existing zoning ordinance so that townhouse style or clustered style development is eliminated and/or prohibited within the various zoning districts of the Borough of Runnymede. Motion having been presented, the board votes as follows, call for you.
Lee Hammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yep.
Bushian?
Yes.
Zajowski?
Yes.
Wilberton?
Yes.
Paul Burley?
Yes.
And Davis?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next order of business we have is an informal application, uh, by Mr. Solis of two oh one Davis Road. Am I pronouncing your name right, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Call out to this one, please, actually, it's, oh, I'm sorry. Just as a preface to this, um, Michelle, uh, your wife, had contacted, uh, Borough Hall about a month ago, and, uh, also con- that that was on to our construction code official, uh, Mr. Keith Knight. Um, subsequently, he passed it on to me. I contacted Michelle, and she had quite a few, uh, questions. They are looking to do some construct at their home, uh, the front and back courses. They had questions that they'll be better answered, uh, here, um, amongst our professionals, and they also had some questions on these, which I explained them comes out of the Borough Hall. Um, did Michelle give you any additional plans to hand out?
Um, you may have, what she may have, all of the copies.
Yeah, would you please just go hand it over? Well, that's, I, I sent out email to the people that had email, but... But not everyone had email.
Is this, uh, is R-one, R-two, or...
R-one?
R-one?
Six seven square feet. Okay, if you want to just approach the microphone and just tell us a little bit about the project, and you can ask us whatever questions you have, this one will accommodate you. Knowing that this, this is informal, we cannot grant you any type of approvals this evening. This is just for your education purposes and try to, you know, give you a little bit of guidance, okay?
Okay. Um, basically, what I'm looking to do is add a closed-end porch, and propose a red, um, side yard. Probably, we could have, was it, encroach a little bit on the neighbors', um, fence.
Setback?
The fence to separate our houses. There might be, uh, thirteen feet between the porch and one building, that's, I would call...
Whereas fourteen is required, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Uh, we just said twenty-five feet require.
It's twenty-five, I, I was reaching for the...
It's the rear of your house?
Yes, sir.
But currently, the back of your house is only five point three, like, from the...
From the fence to back of the house, yes, sir.
The addition of, uh... And if you mind, maybe your front, your front porch also requires a variance, is it also...
It does, um, and speaking with my wife, we decided to forego and just go ahead and redo the front step and not go any further than with the rear. We're basically just rebuild the front step, maybe the repairs, and a sidewalk, not going further than that. So, if anything, the variance would just be from the side yard.
Well, if you want to get, this would be the time that you want to ask for that at the same time?
Yes, sir, uh, I understand, uh, I think now we just go ahead with the, uh, the plan.
So, I would, I cannot, as you're a term, but I agree with, yeah, if you're going to come in and ask for a rear yard variance, ask for the front yard too. Because if you don't want to do it, that's up to you, but if you get to one, there are some statutory limitations if you decide to come back in right away for another... So, I would just do what I need to watch, it's not going to cost you anymore.
Okay, then, perhaps one of my other questions, if it would call for two or one, the other.
Men, variance to one, raise a one.
You just saw the guy at nine, there. Exactly.
Yeah, so back in then, before we say no, but then...
Um, but yes, the, the front yard would encroach probably about five feet is where, uh, they want to...
What, what, you think, Davis, can you tell us whether the front, whether side?
Sure, uh... The, the front facing, is facing Davis Road, and the side would be Pine, Pine Street.
What he's asking is, you gave, um, more pull...
They first gave us a...
I, I thought they were options.
That is actually the front porch variance, so that would be the Davis Road.
That's the front?
Yes.
That's the side?
That's the front.
You've done a very nice job with your house.
That's all my wife.
It was all your...
I put a chair, she did not, but I appreciate she's saying so.
It was very nice, the...
I do.
This one was the...
Uh, that is the side, and the side of Davis Road.
This one's, the side is facing Pine.
And that's being closed?
I, yes, ma'am.
So, it would be a, a variant, a setback variance, twelve foot by nine, nine, nine inches there. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
And then, do you know, Mr. Solis, from the end of this proposed new porch, how far away would you be? Looks like your existing building is twenty feet from the property line. Do you know what the, if you put the new, um, porch in here, how close that would be? Well, that's just, this is just, this is just a walkway, right?
Uh, that would be the, Mr. Phil.
Okay.
So, you're not getting closer to the front?
Is that right?
Which one would be closer?
No.
It's just kind of the design of the porch.
It looks like it won't encroach one thirteen feet from, or be thirteen feet from the right of line.
Forty-six inches. Mr. Solis, if you do make an application, and what, what the, this board likes to see is, um, some measurements made by this survey are exactly where this is, has been built line, all right? Unless they leave, if you got written in twelve feet nine, but we wouldn't want to, if they create a variance and all of a sudden, why, it's ten foot away, all right? And the same thing with the front, front.
Oh, the rear is probably from the, from the, one to one-twenty-five, that's only like five foot three.
Yeah, it's just a building, that whole, yeah, so it's already pre-existing, yeah. But even though, even though he's adding one, he can still be in that variance for the twenty-five, but definitely...
It's a twenty-five foot from the backyard line.
Right.
So, really, what we're looking at is, is the, the section that's not before we use?
Yes. Oh, yeah, not back before we use.
Not a use.
No, again.
Setback, setback.
Yeah, setback. It's not an option. Was that ever, was that number granted or previous, some, maybe fourteen? Yeah, that, that's, sir, yeah, he doesn't really have to prove that, that's just the way the house, the house is.
You bought, you bought the house with the footprint as it is, come on, you're sitting now, okay? So, you, you purchased the house with the pre-existing footprint, with the pre-existing, uh, lot setback at five point three from the back of your building to the, um, property line at the back of your home. You're looking to, um, basically just reduce the amount of setback from your new construction from the proposed, what we like to have twenty-five foot to twelve foot nine inches.
I have a question for the board, um, this is a form of progress, what about these two-five yards? Is that, is your fault calling the rear yard, is that not a side yard?
Yeah, that is actually the rear yard. In this case, the front yard is the, the street that the address is on, this is two oh one Davis Road. So, the front yard is Davis Road, the side yard is Pine Street, and the rear yard would be against the lot nine.
Because the way they have it, it's...
Right.
I think you're the chapter, the R-three yard, R-two, or R-three, and over in the rest of the, uh,
It does.
It does, yeah, it, it, it does define the lot, and it says that...
It's a problem, right, to heal. You agree that there is, the ordinance says about, corner parks have two-five yards, but because of this situation of the home, because it's so far down on Davis, it's not considered a side, it's considered a rear?
Right, um, the definition of the ordinance says it's one front yard, two side yards, one rear yard. In this case, the front yard is Davis Road, because that's the, the house, where the house fronts the address is. The side yard would be Pine Avenue, even though it's a frontage, it's a right of way, it's, in the, by the ordinance, it's considered a side yard. And with that, it would be, the opposite side would be against, with lots one.
But it would have a, a tax incentive with the...
Right, right.
So, there's two variances required, the rear yard setback and the front yard setback.
Yep, and I suggest when you...
I think it's...
Now, the, the fees are set, we can't waive those, we can't modify that. Okay, if you get a, a, you have to go, you better get a list from the tax collector, or a one, one two hundred feet, and then you go to June, you can give the application.
Okay, I have the list.
Okay, you got the list, all right, well, then, you're here for your... You want to say? Okay, I would just get these measurements, maybe instead of handwritten on there, printed on there somewhere, so...
Sure.
And then, yeah, and then you have to publish in the newspaper to, but those directions are...
So, basically, that's my next step, that is the...
Right.
Checking with everybody with two hundred feet.
You gotta send them, yeah, no, you have to send them a copy of what you're proposing, the variances, okay? And if you want it on the form, you write it out, if you want to send it to my office, and you're stopping around, I mean, not, you have to make an appointment, I could look at it for you and tell you if you've met the, met the minimum requirement on that. And then, that's what has to be sent to all the people, registered mail, and then you gotta publish that in the newspaper.
Any other things to wait, now?
No, that's it, I, I appreciate it, her.
No, no, but I tell you, I tell you, Michelle did a fabulous job, she, uh, she sent, she sent us a whole bunch of paperwork for us to look over before we came in tonight, and, uh, very nicely done, and, uh, I wish you all the best in your, uh, in your addition.
Very, very.
I will see you soon, okay?
Very, very, thank you, sir.
Good night. Okay, um, right now, under old business, well, it's kind of that old business because June has asked us this stuff for a long time. June, do you need to get everyone's email addresses? So, go ahead, June, do you want me to give you some time to do it?
You have to send mine.
No, you can't, because you'll have to use, you'll have to come in, and I'll have to do it or something, because they're not taking care of applications. This is going to be for those, uh, financial disclosure forms you thought after this time, so...
It must be done in the trunk.
Yeah, if you want to go to the library, you want to lose your name, I can try and help you with it.
Okay.
But, uh, and the rest of you all have?
All have, June.
Email addresses?
Yes.
I don't do this.
You don't have one either?
I used to have one, but I don't right now.
All right, so you're not the...
I can't afford it, I'll...
All right. But you all know what you have to do, I'll get you the forms that you, uh...
What did I have to do, boss?
Probably, what did you do, or just...
It's, uh, first we may, I think it was, end of, end of this one.
You have to go to emails?
It's, uh, it's all you.
Well, first they know that, once you send it to the agent, you know my address, so maybe...
But I think that we do it at class, and...
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, can you write it down neatly on a piece of paper, so that, and give it to me at the end here, so we know?
Did I have you a thing?
All of the meeting, yeah.
You do it every year. And the idea is it's supposed to help you, if you sell many boards and things like that, you just fill out lots electronically, and you no longer have to send a separate one.
I still need it for all...
I will.
After you... All the millions I made.
Some will be on the...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. All right, so, June, are, are you, are you going to be sending us something to fill out?
I want to write it down, so that I like...
No, 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 what, what I'm getting at is, are you going to be sending us the late, for the financial disclosure forms? We need a week, I don't have a... Well, if they're due, all right, if they're due, May first, today's April tenth, we need to try to have them sooner than later, it's a late, and then we'll fill, fill them out on time. Thank you very much. All right, guys, um, under, under my, guys, who's it? Um, you know, I wanted to go, wonder a couple of things tonight under my report, I know we had a couple of long applications there. Um, I looked at something on this, just spiked my interest because we have those fifty-some homes going up over, um, off Park Road, and there was something that I looked at in, in our master plan, and it was regarding, um, renewable energy, which I'll ask Mr. Dickinson if he's gotten the subcommittee together yet.
No.
Okay, well, they got the committee together, but, I mean, yeah. Um, it says that, uh, and this is, this is under, uh, NJSA fifty-two, uh, twenty-seven D. It says, it provides that developers of twenty-five or more single-family residential dwelling units shall offer the installation of solar energy systems as an option to homeowners. Now, that's part of our master plan, I didn't know if that's something that, uh...
I think I asked an engineer if there were, if solar being affordable to those people because of the way the house was looking, and I don't think that the other home places. So, I have a thing present, that much of the solar being for any property here, don't go there, other than the ones on the cul-de-sac.
Well, it's just something that, uh, again, we've been talking about the renewable energy type of thing, and it is in our master plan, so if you guys have your subcommittee meeting coming up, it might be something that you want to take a look at soon or later because the homes have not begun construction.
Yeah, you heard the variant engineer for, yeah, an accurate, um...
Okay. And I'm, I'm understanding you haven't had a subcommittee meeting as of yet on renewable energy, okay? And I'll report progress on the, uh, on the sign committee, I know we're still working out a few things, and we went over quite a few last meetings, and I don't want to run too long this evening, so... Um, Nick, I just wanted to ask you, how did you make out with the borough on the things we talked about, less signs ordinance?
Yeah, it was pretty obvious that the council understood the, uh, the, it should not be in the right of way. So, the borough engineer is, is bringing back, uh, amendment to our ordinance, basically. It's right of way, so it shouldn't be in there anyway, but at least to give the code enforcement official the ability to, uh, cite people and things like that. There were some concerns about, um, allowing some businesses to put some items out there, and, and that is where the question started to come out, where do you draw them along when you start letting people out there? But the idea is they should not be in the right of way, and, and there was some consensus on that, so hopefully we'll have a resolution, uh, hopefully, June is next one.
We have one mayor from...
Mr. Knight, um, I just had a question for you. I had a, uh, question from a resident about the, uh, the pizzeria over in the Acme Shopping Center. You familiar with that? He was wondering, um, I, I read him the stipulations out of our master plan regarding outdoor dining, and I guess what he's trying to do is perhaps do like a little ice cream out of that, out of that restaurant. And I didn't know, I have on page thirty-six of our master plan, um, where it says that the outdoor dining is prohibited, then it also says that, um, basically, if there is a right of way, it's not within the right of way, and there's a clear sidewalk of five foot, that it is okay for... that it is okay for peremptory circulation. For, I don't know what the measurements are, but I know you're much more familiar with that property. Do you think he would be able to put like two small benches against the wall there and still have enough?
I would have to go out there and measure for these.
Okay.
To be specific. He wants to put it under the canopy?
That's what he wanted to do, and he also said that, his name is, his name is George, he's the new owner there. And he had said that he wanted to put it under the canopy, but then I also believe that there is a sidewalk as it turns the corner. I believe there's a sidewalk on the way to the back of that strip mall. So I don't know if that's wider, more narrow. It requires a trash pickup, which I believe they already have out there. So if, if in your travels, he wanted to know if he was, he would have to come in here, and if he wanted to go to the mayor or council meeting. So I told him that you would probably be at the meeting this evening, I would reach out to you to perhaps just take a peek at it. Whenever you have time, it's always a convenience. And let us know if it would be, you know, allowed for him to put a couple of benches down. Just have the kids sit and eat their ice cream cone outside under the canopy, or if it's going to encroach upon sidewalk, then we'll have to tell them the kid.
Okay, fine, order.
Yes, sir.
While we gave final approval of those businesses, right? Anybody who optified, just had to live within the confines of that resolution, right? If people want to do anything like this, I think he has to make a formal application coming from the board.
Well, he's willing to do that if there's room. If there's not room, it's a, it's a viewpoint, understand? Like if Keith goes out there and says, Dan, there's no way, he's got, he's got a total of four feet and he needs five because that's who's coming in. If Keith goes out there and says, hey, listen, he has ten foot to work with, then he has a foot to stand on to come in here. But to, to come in here, if Keith says there's no way, no how, there's not enough space, doesn't really make much sense to me if I come in here.
But don't we want, the board that says you can't do that?
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't say that. It says, this is what the master plan says. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. It says outdoor dining, this is it on page thirty-six. So, yeah, I mean, there might be, there might be an ordinance, there's an ordinance against outdoor dining. Not a lot that falls under outdoor dining. You know? Yeah, that's just what we're talking about a bench, we're not talking about tables and chairs, I don't know. Pardon me?
No, June was asking.
It does.
It does. But this is an exception.
That the master plan says you can't. It's out of your contract.
Correct, and like I said, it's, I don't want to prolong this because it could be a viewpoint. Because Keith might go out there and say, there's absolutely no space, we can't do it. But I think we should at least have Keith take a look at it whenever he has time. And then I can get, put him in touch with the applicant. And if it's a viable thing that's able to be done, then he can do whatever we require as far as coming in or any type of rules.
I have one thing. Ask me to bring up, there's a trailer. They want to put up that ABC line company, which is the old Brooks dungeon. The house windows in it.
They don't want to block the, I mean, they were terrible when they had this trailer, when Brooksie had that place. Those trailers blocked the view when you were going in and out of that gas station. It was like, close your eyes and just pray.
Okay, so no, you're not in favor of that.
I'm one person. I'm just saying if anyone here.
Well, he's telling me to get your opinion on that, so if.
I'm one person, I'm just saying.
Were there one of those trailers?
They've got in one, one trailer, the house windows in it.
In the back, that company?
Yeah, I guess in the back.
Where's it gonna be? Because the other two were right in the front. So that's, the ones in the front. This is where, where those siding is. We're gonna get, Mr. Knight, could you also reach out to the property owners at ABC and try to get clarification as to where they would like to put these trailers? Because they were definitely a hazard.
One temporary, one year.
Well, one temporary.
From what I understand, the original thought was, was related to me, that they were trailers. Which if they're trailers in the register, there's nothing really prohibits them from parking them. But it's one of the things that I have on a list to introduce to council. People, the fact that some people are registering trailers and using them as.
Right.
Pardon, sorry, excuse me. ABC, I understand, wants to more or less get something on the order, like a pod.
Understood.
A wheelless type container, wherever being a, early in the next year to shed.
Right, Mr. Beatrice, yes?
Whether it has license or not has license, if there's a public safety issue here, I think that was a issue.
Without a doubt, yeah.
Just a license.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're just, that's just flat out, we need to find out where they intend to park this or house it. Because the last time that Brooksie had those there, it was terrible. And we asked them to move them a number of times.
And again, as Mr. Beatrice indicated, unfortunately, there's nothing there for vehicular vision unless it's covered, that obstructs. So again, that's why I think there needs to be revision there of where they can place these things if they create a traffic hazard. And the question is, do you really want them there? Because if somebody puts a tag on a trailer and registers it, they can put ten trailers there.
Well, I certainly don't, but I'm one person.
And pre-arranged tonight, they could put fifteen trailers, but if it's a public safety issue, then they don't get any trailer.
So, Mr. Knight, quite envisioning.
I'm not sure if he doesn't have a right to have any of the.
Yes.
Is this at an intersection in the road?
No, it's on Thomas Drew, but what, what transpires is the way the properties are abutted to each other, the ingress and egress for the gas station is, is right here, okay? And then where Mr. Brooks had his storage trailer, right here. So when you went to egress the gas station, you couldn't see the traffic coming up Thomas Drew, and they couldn't see you.
Is that a parking space?
I don't know, I don't think it is. I don't think, I probably think he has lined parking spaces, they usually back in the trailers to unload and whatnot.
Also, an ingress and egress is there's usually site triangles.
Correct.
So cars can typically park in a site triangle because their bumper height is lower than three feet and.
We have an ordinance that we know of that prohibits trailers piping, parking in the site triangle?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a site safety issue, as Mr. Beatrice is talking about. If we can declare a site triangle, site, site safety issue. Trailers, the clear sight distances between three feet and seven feet. So that's why we allow trucks to be put into site triangle or trees to limb at seven feet. Car bumpers, fronts of cars are usually allowed to be in that area too, because the typical driver is sitting behind the wheel to look over the hood of the car.
Mr. Knight successfully defended site triangle violations all over the park.
Okay, so this could be a site triangle issue, where they're parking in, their trailer's entered in that parking.
Again, I'd find out. They don't appear to be, or the information is given to me, they're not trailers and possibly a rear property. But I would have to go up there to find out.
Even if they're box trucks, the, those, that area, their parking spaces should be restricted from.
What is the maximum plate on that line, seven foot is it?
Seven, well, yeah, it's a clear distance between three feet and seven feet. Excuse me, if we need an interpretation, we need some help. We have the police department to do that. Okay? I'm not, I'm not saying what they're doing is wrong. I think, I think Mr. Knight is misinterpreting what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that, just like the chairman is one person, I don't believe that we should create a public safety problem if we don't have to. If the guy can put it there and it's legal, then he can put it there. I'm not saying you can't put it there. Except that there's an issue where to put some, I was public safety.
Yeah, I think, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Knight.
But Mr. Knight, you look for a clear line, there is none.
But, but what I'm, what I'm saying is for me to prohibit somebody to cite them, even though it does create a safety hazard, there's no question about that, I need a specific code.
Right.
To cite them. I, I can't just.
Well, I suggested we better the police department get the specific code.
Well, Keith, does each property need a specific code? And Brian, you can probably enter on this. Does each property require a specific code for their site triangle in order for Mr. Knight to keep them in compliance?
Site triangles, as Mr. Knight probably agrees, are hard to, are to define, unless it's been approved by the, by the board. Under site plan review, we typically ask for site triangle easements to be provided at ingress and e, well, egresses of sites. And by, if they encroach across property lines, then we ask for that line to be defined and easements be drawn.
Well, I think it's encouraging.
This even over site, it may not have that site triangle easement drawn.
Well, at least it's encouraging to me that the applicant actually asks before it is on the line. So why don't we just, why don't we, I guess, try to find out from, I guess, Mr. Becca is who he is? Is it Mr. Becca? Maybe we can find out from Mr. Becca what his intentions are, and then let him know what our desires are. And if he can comply with our desires to put them in the back of the building, then we're in good shape. If he has desires to put them where they're going to create public safety, we're gonna have to take some action upon that to try to prevent it.
I don't think he has the authority to that.
I'm sorry?
I don't think he has the authority to that.
Well, we don't know what the size is, we know the ways to try to, we try to put pods in, I mean, these whole things. I think Mr. Becca should just address it with the, with the property owner and just tell them that we're desirous to have this out of the site triangle. And anybody with any common sense, you know, should be able to look at that and say, I shouldn't have a trailer there. And, you know, I think we can probably hopefully have a common sense agreement with this property owner that he puts it in a place that doesn't pose a public safety hazard. If he says he wants to put it where we don't want it, then tell Chris to let us, let us know. And I guess we'll have to address it at some point in time. I don't know what apparatus we use to address it at this point in time, but, you know, just tell them what we're desirous of. Hopefully the property owner will be in the grants. Okay, thank you. All right, now, I'd like to take this moment to open up the Good Welfare Porsha Board meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter at all, please come forward if you heard, say your name. Anyone?
Yeah, I'm, I'm. He wasn't paying attention. I was gonna talk offline, but I'm bringing up. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody. My name is Tim Smith, eighteen East Fourth Avenue. I'd like to thank those of you responsible from last week, I came to the council meeting, and I spoke about the situation with the running liquor store and their parking situation and their privacy fence. Actually, probably within about two days since I brought up the meeting, they have actually started to work on the fence. So that's a good thing, everybody's going on right now. However, it's, I don't want to say it's funny to mention this, but the fence is approximately eight hours old today, just put up. And about fifteen minutes before I came to the meeting, I scared somebody off the property, or peeing, urinating, sorry, on the new fence. So that was one of my regrets from last week, was the urination problem and having children to witness that. But now that they have this fence put up, it's still, it's halfway up. So now I'm still seeing people halfway urinating on the fence. So I scared them off, and they'll probably be back in town anytime soon. But my next question is, and I can talk to Mr. Knight after the meeting, or you can answer us now, is after they tore the house down that was there, which is a residential, it is now, I guess, an unofficial parking lot. Now, based on the codes, that for them making a parking lot, to meet the parking lot requirements, that has to be paved, created. It does have to have a subway fence, but it's halfway there now. But there's nothing going on with it now, and there's actually no signs that ingress or egress in that parking lot. So what I want to know is, are they gonna drag their feet for the permit to get all taken care of? Or is there a way where we can kind of, you know, get the ball rolling faster on their end? Because the way I look at it right now is that, once they took the house down, now they're, they're a parking lot. There's a parking lot right there. And I don't know if they really care enough to have it paved, however, it's not meeting the parking lot requirements.
So your question to us is, can we compel this business owner?
Correct.
To make the necessary improvements on this parking lot?
Correct.
To make it conform to codes? Is that your question to us?
Yes.
Okay, and what are the deficiencies at this point in time?
As of right now, it is, from what I know, is they didn't bring up no permit or anything like that. Is that correct?
Do you have that paved?
Correct. So I actually have everything here. It's not graded, it's not paved. They don't have any lighting. They have, they have one little light, which is a full light on the back of the liquor store, and it's not the adequate lighting. And a big safety feature that they need to install is actually the concrete parking bumpers with the stoppers, poles. So, I mean, as of right now, when people come barreling up that hill into the liquor store parking lot, they could very well fly. If they're not paying attention, the work there already intoxicated. They can come flying through that fence in my backyard and got a bad strike myself and my kids, my life. So I think that's the next big step, is that once they get the fence put up, or even before they get the fence put up, they can start putting in these parking bumpers before something happens. So if they want to meet the parking lot requirements, which they had in the parking there prior to this house being tore down, they should have met those requirements, so they should have had the parking bumpers put up before, so they're kind of behind in the April as far as that goes.
Mr. Rowan, is this something that we've got to immediately address by mayor and council versus here?
Well, if they're, this house they tore down, is that a residential lot or was that a commercial lot?
That was a residential lot.
So they're gonna use variance.
And it's adjacent to the liquor store?
Right next door to the liquor store.
Used for parking, their parking lot?
Just gonna be used.
Or used for commercial purpose?
Commercial use, so they're gonna need to use variance.
And, and they could be cited.
The gentleman was, Mr. Spencer's at the council meeting, and Mr. Cabal was at his committee. I was a member of the planning board, whether it had, they had been in front of the planning board. Because at that point, we had determined whether there's a planning board violation or if there was something he had to do to the property or whatever.
Sounds like a use variance for sure.
Yeah, I think, Sam, that piece that was residential, it's still a residential lot.
Correct.
So, I mean, I need shoes for commercial.
Well, he shouldn't be using it for parking at all right now, is that correct?
Well, because it doesn't comply with our requirements for parking.
Yeah, he should not be parking any cars there, we can cite him if he does.
I would tell you that, and he's got.
Cars being parked there?
Oh, this car is still parked there on the dirt area where the house was. And it's very unorganized, so there's definitely some.
I can go see here, myself and councilwoman.
Yes, people park wherever they want there, they park sideways, they, they come flying through there. It's pretty much free fall, there's no designated lines.
I don't think, I don't believe we can force him to, to pay them right now, but we can.
But then again, he can't park there either.
Cannot park. So we can cite him every time.
Yeah, he has been cited, I cited him for utilizing the area because it's an non-affordable surface.
Yes.
For parking vehicles there, so he has been cited. But I'm directed by, I can certainly cite him again, it's a continuing, a recurring violation, you can vote against the court. Again, I can't make him pay it, but I can make him keep the cars off.
Well, at this point in time, he can't pay it because it doesn't have a use variance called a parking lot. He can't pay it, he's got to come in front of us, get a use variance, and then we have to prove it for commercial use.
He can't use it for parking until we get.
Right, but he hasn't taken the steps, I think that's the question.
Right.
Correct.
Yes, it's the fact that he isn't in that process. He isn't moving the pavement in the, in the area when he's utilizing as a non-affordable.
The fence is looking good, though, it's going.
It's looking good, just gotta keep the old stains off.
Did he get a permit for the fence, Keith?
Did he get it from us?
Okay, good. Well, we'll, we'll certainly ask Mr. Knight to cite him, and we'll certainly try to advise him that he's gonna, he desires to use it for a parking lot. And he has to come before this board and ask for a use variance. Doesn't mean he's gonna get it, he has to come in and ask for it and prove a burden, you know, that use variances are not just something that you just give out. He has to prove a burden of why it's going to be beneficial to the public and not, not detriment to the public.
I mean, as of right now, he can still utilize the existing parking lot that was there as attached to his commercial property. as attached to the commercial property, he can still utilize that, uh, however, he does need those parking bumpers to solve to keep the vehicles from going into my backyard.
Well, he makes it, he makes it a part, if he comes in and asks for a variance, and asks us to grant that variance for the use of, of a parking lot, he'll also have to